Hello and welcome. My name is Connie Mitchell. I'm the president of the League of Women Voters of Dearborn, Dearborn Heights, Michigan. We are a nonpartisan national organization that encourages the informed and active participation of citizens in government. The League never supports or opposes candidates or political parties. Membership is open to everyone, men, women, and young teens aged sixteen years or older. I'm also the moderator of tonight's candidate forum, which is presented and produced as a public service by the League of Women Voters and Access. This is an opportunity for candidates to express their views related to their candidacy. The LWV does not certify the accuracy of any candidate's responses to questions and is not responsible for the views expressed therein. Voters are encouraged to fact-check information shared at the forum. The forum is being conducted on Thursday, October ninth, twenty twenty-five, at the Henry Ford Centennial Library in Dearborn, Michigan. And the recording that you are watching has been released in its entirety. This candidate forum is for the office of the city council in the city of Dearborn, Michigan. The League of Women Voters and Access want every eligible voter to inform themselves and to vote. For additional information on today's candidates, please visit the League's online voter guide at vote411.org. It's also available in a bookmark on the table in the vestibule. If you're not sure about your polling place or voter registration status, please contact the city clerk's office or visit the Secretary of State's Michigan Voter Information Center at my gov/vote to find your polling place in all of your districts. Now, I am delighted to start the forum. The candidates have agreed to the following plans. Opening statements will be delivered in alphabet of the order. Thereafter, the order of responses will be rotated. Each candidate will have one minute to make an opening statement and one minute to answer each question. We will end with each candidate having two minutes to make a final statement. The timekeeper, Trisha Jokum, will give fifteen-second warnings to cue the candidates to bring their answers to a close. She also has prepared a thirty-second warning to let you know that your fifteen seconds is the next. Unfortunately, time will probably not allow us to answer all the questions that have been prepared this evening. So if you have more questions of the candidates, we encourage you to contact them. And their information is online at vote411.org. The November fourth election will determine seven individuals who will serve four-year terms as city council meeting members in the city of Dearborn. The candidates are Robert A. Abraham, Mubarak Ahmed, Othman Ali Alamsi, Kamal Al-Sawafi, Mark Andrew, Sharon Domich, Gary Enos, Mustafa Hamood, Shadi Marawi, Devon O'Reilly, Ahmad Othman, Ken Paris, and Michael T. Serini. The candidates have been invited to prepare one-minute opening statements. Candidates Enos, O'Reilly, and Othman are unable to join us tonight. Yes. And, oh, that's right, there are a lot of people. And they have submitted opening statements, which I will read on their behalf after our other candidates who are present have presented their opening statements. We are ready to begin.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank the League and Access for putting this wonderful event on and all the voters that are here to listen in. My name is Robert Abraham. I'm a twenty-four-year councilman incumbent. I love serving my community. I grew up in Dearborn and a product of Dearborn Public Schools. I spent my life and raised my family here, and I intend to be here as long as I can. I love serving this community. I like to give back. I help out at the Dearborn Animal Shelter. I volunteer for the Dearborn Exchange Club, support the Dearborn Goodfellows, Dearborn Public Schools, Henry Ford Community College. I sit on the Henry Ford Community College Foundation Board, as well as the wonderful Forts and Varsity Athletic Club. I've been endorsed by many organizations in the city, including the commanders and officers police of Dearborn, lieutenants and sergeants police of Dearborn, and Dearborn firefighters. Thank you.
Next candidate, please.
Hi, my name is Mubarak Ahmed. I'm running for Dearborn City Council. I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for having me here. Lifelong resident of Dearborn, planning on raising my five kids in Dearborn, and I'm ready to serve the community. My plan is to listen, take notes, and give back responses, viable responses, with a plan of action to every concern that reaches my ears. And that will be my goal once I'm on council. I have developed some apps and some other ways to reach new youth, and my plan is to go from community to community and set up times where we, at least once a month before council meetings, so we can hear everybody's concerns in the community. My job's already out, so feel free.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Matt Adia Nancy, and I'm a lifelong Dearborn resident. I'm running for Dearborn City Council because for me, it's about service, not politics. My vision is simple, and it's for a cleaner, safe, and affordable Dearborn. Cleaner streets through efficient city services, safer streets through strong support for our police, and affordability through having a strict budget and not raising your taxes. I've spoken to lots of residents over the past few months, and a lot of people just want unity. They don't want division. They want accountability, they want unity, and they want action. So that's what I'll bring. And since we got fifteen more seconds, I've been endorsed by the Dearborn Democratic Club, by the UAW. I highly suggest you guys all consider me. Thank you.
First of all, I want to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this wonderful forum. I'm councilman Kamal Al-Sawafi, a proud Army veteran and representative on the Dearborn City Council. My service, whether it's overseas or here at home, has always been about protecting people and delivering results. During my time on council, I've made public safety a top priority, securing over a million dollars for grants for traffic calming measures, working with the administration and my colleagues, supporting our police and fire administration, and securing top equipment for our police and fire, and pushing for more officers in our neighborhoods. My record is one of action, accountability, and service. I'm proud of the progress we've made and committing to building on that progress. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Mark. I just retired from the fire department after twenty-eight years. It's the greatest job I've ever had, and I miss it already. I'm also running for city council. But rather than talk about all the things we have in common, I'd like to bring up a couple of things that maybe separate me from some of my colleagues. Like a lot of Dearborn politicians, I was born and raised here, but I have not lived here my whole life. I've lived somewhere else for a short time. But I came back to Dearborn because it's the city I love. Another thing that's different about me is, from a lot of politicians, I do not have a master's degree or a bachelor's degree. I'm a proud attendee of Henry Ford Community College and multiple trade schools. I worked in a trade, working with my hands at the ground level, working with the people of Dearborn for almost thirty years, and I loved every minute of it.
I'm Sharon Domich, and thank you, Access and League of Women Voters. I moved to Dearborn when I was eighteen. I became a young mom, and when I was twenty-three, my daughter started kindergarten, and I've been involved ever since, never had one break. We raised our three kids here. I've been involved in many, many organizations. I still stand on the street corner and sell papers and do many other things. I served on the Board of Education and Henry Ford Community College Board of Trustees for twenty-three years. And I also was elected to the City Charter Commission and served until that term ended last year. I always will be Dearborn proud. When I ran before, that was my slogan. I don't think everything is a hundred percent perfect, but I strive to improve myself every day, and so I would strive to.
Hello, my name is Mustafa Hamood, and I'm running for reelection to your Dearborn City Council. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for holding this forum along with Access. I think a lot of you in this room actually already know me and know my family, know the history of public service that already runs in my blood. I started in politics when I was about seven years old, knocking on the door, and I think for me, public service is one of those things that you have to live in order to understand. You know, I was born and raised in Dearborn. I attended our public schools, and I graduated from Dearborn. I've worked at Ford Motor Company my entire professional career, and that's why I know that keeping Dearborn thriving is important to all of us. And, you know, over the past four years, I think we've delivered measurable results in terms of actual implementation of flooding mitigation. And one of the things that I'm very proud of is the implementation of local ballot translations that I know was something that I always grew up trying to fight for and that we actually got done. So thank you guys so much.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters and Access for hosting this event, and thank you all for attending and performing your civic duties. My name is Shadi Marawi, and I'm running for Dearborn City Council. As a public health professional, the son of immigrants, and I understand the challenges that working class and historically underserved communities face because I've lived them from the burden of high property taxes to the lack of accessible mental health services and the need for policies that prioritize safe and healthy living, I've seen firsthand where changes needed. My platform aims to bring a public health lens to every aspect of city decision-making to ensure that health, safety, and equity are the center of our policies. If you believe in leadership that works for the people and a public health approach to local governance, then I'd be honored to earn your support.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ken Duris. Thank you to the League of Women Voters, Dearborn, Dearborn Heights, and also Access for holding this. You're going to know a lot about me anyway by reading material, just Googling information, and some of the information that's been provided to you already by the League and some other entities out there. But something I will tell you, I grew up most of my life here in Dearborn. I raised my family. I went to Dearborn High School, Henry Ford College, University of Michigan, Dearborn. I also went to the Eastern Michigan School of Police Staff in Command. I ran public safety for a number of years at the University of Michigan, Dearborn. I was the first police officer on that campus. I spent over twenty-seven years at the Dearborn Police Department. I had a career there in public service that really got me interested in something like this and running for council. You know, I was also a member of the Michigan Association of Chiefs of Police. I've got a lot of background, and I had the Historical Museum asked on the first police officer that's been on council.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mike Serini, and I have had the honor of serving as your council president the last four years. I grew up in public service. My mom served twenty-four years for the city of Dearborn, and so as a young man, I would see people come to her house, ask for help, and got really involved at a very young age. I knew I was going to want to continue that service, so I decided to go back to school. I have five children. I graduated from University of Michigan here in Dearborn, went on to Cooley Law School, graduated cum laude, passed the bar, and then decided to continue running for public office. I was fortunate to win and then continue serving. So for me, a big component of my aspect of being on the council is structural and budget. I don't believe we should spend more money than we take in. I do believe that we have to ask questions that some people don't like and that they're backed in fact and law. One thing you can know about me is what I say. I do back it up, and I try to be efficient and be very consistent. I think my record has shown that.
Thank you very much for those statements. Now, I'd like to read a statement from candidate Gary Enos. I sincerely apologize for being unable to attend tonight's forum, but I am very grateful for this opportunity to address the League of Women Voters and Access. I have been a proud Dearborn resident since nineteen seventy-six and attended Dearborn Public Schools, where I participated in team sports at Esso Ford, as did my two brothers, Lauren and Dan. My son Sean also attended Dearborn Public Schools, played football at Esso Ford, and is currently attending Henry Ford College. My mother, Mariana, continues her more than fifty-year career as a nurse at Corwell Oakwood Hospital. I am the grandson of a World War II veteran and proudly support and contribute to the Dearborn Goodfellows, friends for the animal shelter, and animal member of the Dearborn Health. I'm a local small business owner, and we recently celebrated our thirtieth year of business at Falls Sports Lounge, where I also put in a hard day's work cooking and managing. I have also had the honor of serving as a member of the Dearborn City Council for the last three years, and am proud of the work we have accomplished, knowing there is always more to be achieved. And from candidate O'Reilly, good evening. Although I would have loved to be with my colleagues and neighbors at this important event, I am unable to, for what I hope you agree is fair reason. My second daughter, Kennedy Grace, was just born, and I am spending the evening with my new family. It is also a personal reminder of why I am running for city council, to ensure that Dearborn that my daughters grow up in is as incredible and fulfilling as the one I experienced for over thirty years. I have tremendous respect for our city council members and have a unique understanding of the hard work that goes along with this position. I'm a third-generation public servant to the people of Dearborn with my father and grandfather's service going back over fifty years. I currently serve the city as the vice chair of the West Downtown Development Authority, and in my professional career, have spent fifteen years driving economic development and small business growth throughout the region. Now, we are ready to begin our question and answer period. Our first question for the evening. What is your idea of diversity, equity, and inclusivity, and how will you, as a council person, work towards supporting these ideas for residents citywide? And let us start with Mr. Othman Alamsi. Let's play pass to Mike.
Hello, everybody. Mike, so how would I make every part of Dearborn feel felt and included? During my campaign, actually, I made a point to visit all the churches, all the mosques, and I believe that's sending a message that I'm not for a certain, you know, religion or ethnicity. And even the last city council meeting, I made a public statement pushing for unity. So yeah, the same way I'm running my campaign and the same way I'll serve as your city councilman, pushing for unity, making sure that I'm present in all intimate areas, whether it's at church or at the mosque or even at the park. And you know, and people know me for this, as the candidate who's everywhere and the most hardworking. So yeah, I will be there for you, no matter where you are in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Same question to Sharon Domich.
I think my past experience on the Board of Education and all of the work I've done in the community and my work as a nurse for PACE, where I work with the handicapped and nursing home-eligible people, is I just accept everybody, and I just think that's so important. And I just know that one of the things in this community, I love the diversity, and I worked very hard when we were on the school board to make sure everyone was included. In fact, I worked very hard to make sure the autistic kids got their fair share. I was the only one that stood up for a little child that really needed some assistance. I just feel that there's room on this earth for everybody and everybody of any religion, any color, anything. We're all the same, and I think I work hard for that.
Thank you. Same question to Ken Bass.
Thank you. What I'll say about this topic in particular is watch what I say, watch what I do, watch how I live. Just my time as a police officer and law enforcement, I'm going to tell you, we had some tough times in this city. And I would ask you that, ask people that have worked for me or have worked with me in the past. I've always been fair and consistent. I've been objective. Even when it comes time for discipline and making those hard decisions, people knew my background and what I represented, and that I was always fair and consistent with everyone. And that still holds true today. You come to a council meeting, I will give you respect. I will listen to you. I will make an objective decision on how I can affect you and your problem that you have before us and really delve into the matter to see what is fair and what's responsible and what is within the realm of responsibility that I can accomplish. So I think I've excelled in that over my career. Thank you.
Thank you. Our community is very unique and, as all of you know, very diverse. If I've learned one thing, serving this community takes strong leadership to bring people together and unite them. We have one of the best, if not the best, community and city in the state of Michigan, and that's built from each person, each house, each neighborhood, right up through our leadership at City Hall. And as we navigate through some of these more difficult decisions that have to be made, I've learned over the years that it takes building strong relationships with everybody on the council, everyone in the mayor's office and his team, as well as each and every resident, to listen to their point of view and get their perspective and use that knowledge and understanding to reach consensus and compromise for the greater good and the critical whole. Thank you.
Dearborn is a city of peace and of love and of diversity already. I would say that I don't know if we need a bureaucratic solution to diversity and equity. And I'm not just saying this because our mayor happens to be in the room. He's done an exemplary job of hiring the best people to run his administration, and I know so because I've worked with those administrators, regardless of their cultural background or their skin color. He hired the best. And I think we have a diverse city through that hard work of looking for the best people for the job. I think the work's already been done. We can continue it, but I'm proud of the work our city's already done towards diversity.
Thank you. Mr. Hamood.
So you know, DEI is like one of those buzzwords that I think a lot of people throw around all the time, right? And I think the real question is, you know, what does it actually mean to people? As somebody who, for so many years, fought for the changes that I wanted to see in the city and now is finally in this position where I actually have the opportunity to implement those changes, I want to talk a little bit about what did we actually do that is measurable for people? Things like flooding mitigation, things like new parks, things like translated ballots, these are actually measurable improvements that you make in the lives of people, not just words that we throw around and virtue signal and make ourselves feel better about, right? So what is diversity, equity, inclusion to me? It's not just about having a diverse team. It's about actually listening to those diverse people and all those perspectives and actually implementing something that not only benefits one group of people, but makes the collective whole stronger altogether. And that's one of those things that I love about Dearborn is it's a mixed city, and as much as people from the outside want to try to make it one group or another, I love that we are able to make something better than the parks.
When I rose my right hand to protect the Constitution, I rose my right hand to protect every single American. When I rose my right hand to serve our city, I rose my right hand to serve every resident of Dearborn regardless of their belief, religion, or color. Regardless of who you are in the city of Dearborn, I'll make sure your trash gets picked up on time. Thank you.
Mr. Marawi.
I think in this day and age, everyone wants to be representative, but more importantly, everyone wants to be heard, and that's something I'm committed to do on council. Doesn't matter what religion you preach, it doesn't matter how you look like, what faith you come from. In the end, what's most important is that you're being served by fairly. And luckily, I've had the upbringing by my parents to be in many diverse settings. I have a very diverse family. Throughout my education career, I've had the opportunity to be in different forms with people that don't look like me, or people that don't come from where I come from. And I would say that just gives you a different outlook in life. I work with the city of Detroit, where we serve Detroit as reengaging them back in the workforce. And just from all the different conversations, just talking to different people, just gives you a whole different perspective in life.
Mr. Serini.
Thank you. I mean, for me, I do look at a little bit different, the way you were raised and the way you were grown up. My father always would say to me that if you're not American Indian, you came from somewhere else. So everybody in the United States has had a different background, and that's normal for me. And ultimately, the judge, the only judge is God, so we don't judge people. I never have. The one thing that's great about our country and our rules and our laws is itself, we're a law, we're a law society. So for me, when I implement and I use the law, I use it based on, for everybody's the same. So for me, it's really simple. It doesn't seem to be an issue. No matter what the person is, no matter what they have to say, that's the right that they have. And for me, I think that I've proven that and demonstrated that through my time on council. Thank you.
And finally, Mr. Almen.
So I've been a merchantman for the last fourteen years, so I've definitely been all over the world, and I could honestly say Dearborn's one of the most diverse cities I've ever seen. The problem is, a lot of people in parts of the city feel like they haven't been heard. I could completely understand, being a father, by that your life can be very hectic, and you can't always make it to a city council. So my plan to make sure everybody's voice is heard is at least once a week in different parts of the city, just for an hour, just for an hour, to meet up at a certain place and get to hear what that specific neighborhood's concerns are, and then have a plan of action and then follow through. And I hope once I'm in council, my results will show for themselves. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen and ladies. Our next question. If a resident submits a question that is directed to the council as a whole or to you individually, how will you plan to respond? And the first opportunity to speak will go to Mr. Hamood.
You know, so I do have the advantage here of having served on the body, so this is a pretty common thing, right? I think first, you have to listen, right? When a resident comes in and directs a question directly at you, typically, you know, a question directly at you is not always a, well, it could start as a positive interaction, but you have to still listen because it's your job as an elected representative in the city to represent everybody. Second, you have to understand what their concern is, which is, you know, why is this person feeling this way? What are they trying to convey to me? And third, I think most important is you have to empathize. You know, it's one of those things I talk about all the time, which is this person came up here, they're feeling some type of way, and how can I try to understand what they're going through, give them a good response, and try to resolve whatever issue it is or question that they do have? So I think that's one of those things I've demonstrated in my time on the council, and I appreciate the question, actually.
Thank you. Mr. Paris.
Again, it's already been repeated. Being an incumbent council member, I do have a little bit of experience with this already. But I respect everybody that comes to the council meetings, and I do have generally a thought of transparency that I like to exude to everybody in the city to attend our meetings, because you need your voice is heard. And I've been consistent on that over the years, well, even before I was on council. But what I will tell you, when you do address council, it's usually as a last resort. I'm sorry, a last resort. People are going to different avenues, different departments, different department heads, different resources to be able to get their answer, to get a resolve. They haven't gotten a resolve sometimes, and come to us on council to take out the remedy. So I am respectful of that and want to listen, just like what's been said, listen to the individual, try to understand, and then get back with them. There's other ways of communication, too, is through the emails and phone conversations. Answer a lot, a lot of people who require me.
Mr. Al Anzit.
Hello. Okay, I thought I had to turn around. I like this question. I feel like with how polarized the city is and the country is, I feel like I've already felt that during the campaign. I think the best way to go about it is to not get emotional and understand what the constituency and the state. And, you know, like Hamud, someone to have Hamud answered it, you have to have empathy and understand where they're coming from. Yeah, and like I said, I do feel like this camp, like the current landscape is very polarized. And some people can be very direct, especially when you go door to door. People don't mind going answering the door, and they're going to question you, they're going to be very direct. You have to have thick skin, and that's exactly what I had. Thick skin, coming with a heart of empathy, and trying to feel their needs and basically convince them that their concerns will be addressed. Thank you very much.
Mr. Sereni.
Thank you. So yes, as the president of the council, we do have a specific protocol for answering residents. Most of them do come in via email. We have an all-council email, which I helped issue to before I was the council president, because they were going individually. So now they come to all council, they get law. Well, my biggest thing is that I want to make sure is, of course, we want the residents to be heard. But for me, I like to give them the result. So what happens is, we make sure, we filter out which department the issue is at, where it can be fixed, and we work together with the mayor and administration and collaboration to find out, where did we miss something? Because we're not perfect, folks. We do make mistakes. Things do happen. But what happens is, an old councilwoman told me, Nancy Hubbard, God rest her name, many years ago, you're not going to get everybody the answer they want. But if you answer them, they'll be very happy that at least they had a conversation. So we made sure that we respond to every email and every message sent to the council in one format or another, in the same format usually that they send them.
Mr. Dillman.
Thank you. First of all, I understand that there is a protocol that's followed through the city council, just as there was for all the times I served on the school board, for those 23 years. And let me tell you, there was one night where 108 people came to speak. And I happened to be the board chair. They had their three minutes to speak. I was very respectful to them. I did not engage back and forth with them to figure out the time. I mean, it was like a long time. But I was always, always, always respectful to every single person, even if they were giving me a public flogging, which they did. But I appreciated their comments, and I thanked them for their comments, and moved on to the next person. I think people deserve to be heard, but I think respect is a two-way street.
Mr. Abraham.
Thank you. Typically, people reach out for help to someone they can trust, someone they respect. I'm one of those people. I agree with everything that council president said down there, how our office operates, and how we look to resolve problems with solutions. But ultimately, when people want help, the first thing is to recognize that they're asking for help, and then reach out to the administration typically, if it's a city issue or a county issue, to the county commissioner, and try and connect people. It's all about developing those relationships, developing trust, and knowing how to get things done. When people reach out to us, yes, by volume, it's probably email. But this job at city council is 24 hours a day, whether you're parking at your car to go into a restaurant, or you're walking in the park, you're going to get people that approach you, and nine times out of 10, it's to get something resolved. Thank you.
Mr. Al Sowaki.
Thank you. So just a little bit about me. I owned my own small business before. I had my bachelor's in business and I had my master's in business. I know customer service. And internally, we have a tracker and a process to submit issues or problems that we receive. I also have an internal tracker to make sure that I'm tracking the progress on the issue. And that progress is not done in silence. That progress is done through the hard work of the men and women at the city of Dearborn, starting with the administration to everybody throughout the city. So I feel like I've closed the proximity between elected officials and the residents. Got a lot of calls throughout the city. I've always made sure, if anybody at home or here is watching, I've always gone back to you, I've always given you the answer, the best answer that I can. Thank you.
Mr. Dillman.
So to understand that when a member of the community has a problem and they address the council, they're going to be upset about a certain issue. So you have to understand why they're upset, and you have to understand where they're coming from. They are living here, paying taxes here, and we are there to serve them. So my approach would be to feel what they feel and try to come up with the best or simplest answer. We're not going to always see eye to eye on every issue, but you want to make sure that their issue is addressed and heard. And at the end of the day, honestly, we're just a big community that wants the best for our city. And if you can relate that to the person you're speaking to in the nicest way, with the best demeanor, so is the best way to go.
Thank you. Mr. Andrew.
Whether in the military, whether in a workplace, or whether when you're an elected official, leadership starts with listening. It's something I learned in the fire service. Whether somebody was having a mental health crisis, they were in a car accident, they were having a medical thing, somebody in their family's having a medical emergency, allowing them to talk and be heard is very important. And I will continue the work that this board has already put forth in having those residents' issues heard.
Thank you. And finally, Mr. Mawari.
Something my mom has always told me is, God gave you two ears for a listen for a reason, and one mouth for a reason, and that's to listen. Although I haven't had the opportunity to be on council, something I've been actively doing is door knocking. And when you knock on people's doors, the first thing that'll hit you is, with questions, what are you going to do about this or the? And I think it's okay not to have an answer sometimes. And I'll tell people, I'm a straight shooter. If I don't have the answer, I'm not going to give you a made-up answer. I'm going to tell you. I don't have the answer, but something I promise is that I will follow up. I will get you the answer. Currently, I work at pace where we serve our senior population. And something I deal with on a daily basis at our center is complaints. Our senior citizens will come up, complain about whether it's service, whether it's a delay, whatever it may be, whether it's a misappointment. And I think people are appreciative of the fact that you listen, but as well as following up. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last question will be this one. The recent installation of speed bumps has helped reduce speeds in neighborhoods around schools and parks. What further action can the council take to address traffic issues such as speeding, drag racing, and the resulting excessive noise? And we will begin with Mr. Andrew.
Well, this is something I certainly had a chance to do with over the last 30 years. We do get a lot of car accidents in our city. The speed bumps have helped. And it's not fun to have to slowly go over them all the time, but it's necessary, and it was needed. Unfortunately, we can make the argument about a few bad apples ruining this or that. But reckless driving and speeding is certainly an issue. What council can do is to fully authorize the police and local prosecutors to punish reckless driving to the full extent of the law. It's a different argument when it comes to just regular speeding, because reckless driving is generally the one that we have to fear the most. And it's something that Dearborn, I think, has done great work in handling until now.
Thank you. Same question to Mr. Sereni.
Thank you for the question. For me, I work very close with the mayor's office and our police chief. The speed bumps are just the beginning. And you'd be surprised how many people want them. We put them everywhere. We have old city hall. There's more we can do, though. There's a lot more work that we can do. The lightest stop signs that most of us have seen are helping. And we also passed an ordinance on the council that gave the authority to seize the vehicle from the person that is drag racing. And that is very big. When I took over as the council president, too, I instituted it under the approval of the administration, the police chief, to ask every council member to go along for a ride along. That's never happened before. We're allocating nearly $50 million to our police department, but yet we're not sure exactly every single day what we're doing is allocating money. So I had each individual person go along and ride with the police officers to see what they do on a daily basis, to understand what's going on in the traffic. It is a concern, and we have much more to do. We're not kicking it down the road. And I do believe that the next four years, we'll have more to do.
Mr. Abraham. Would you pass the mic, please?
Thank you. The city charter empowers the Dearborn City Council to protect the health and welfare of all of our residents, and it's a job that we all take very seriously. When it comes to reckless driving, specifically in the neighborhoods, it's just completely unacceptable. And with my conversations with the chief of police and the mayor, this is one of the city's top priorities, if not the top priority, to continue to enforce safe driving in our neighborhoods. It starts with the parents. We have to educate the parents, and we have to educate the drivers that they have to slow down, they have to follow the speed limits. And all I can do is promise the next administration and the next chief of police that I will pledge to give all possible resources that are available to keep the traffic going slow, keep our kids safe in the parks and in the schools, and every time they cross the street, make sure they make it to the other side.
Ms. Dovitch.
I've seen a lot of improvement with the speed bumps, and I'm really glad we have them. But there's always room for improvement. On the way here tonight, I saw two people pulled over in between Brady and here, actually. So I think our police department are out there doing the work. And I'm glad that the schools have started again with the city, I believe, drivers' education. And I think it's so important, I think there's a huge difference, but I also think that parental responsibility, like Mike Sereni said, is really important. I think we have to educate the parents and really come down hard on the ones that aren't following the rules. Or it's for the kid's safety, it's for everybody's safety. But I'm really pleased to see the progress we've made, and I really am happy about the additional work being done and hopefully more education.
Mr. Almair.
So again, like everything that has been said here, one of the small fix that I would do is add stop signs to end of alleys. It's a quick, cheap, and expensive way to fix it. You know, a lot of people that just dash out of alleyways. One of the other things I would like to do or see is a lot more strict enforcement, like on the punishment side. A lot of these kids that are very reckless, all our kids and all our lives in danger, think it's just a ticket and they'll get their car, or if it's impounded, no big deal. I would like to see more strict, whether it's suspension, or you can't get your license back within, you know, six-month course. Also, I would also like to see a lot more police enforcement out there. I know there's budget restrictions, but I would like to see that. Thank you.
Mr. Paris.
Thank you for the question. What I'm going to preface this on is, I did run for city council back in 2017. Before that, I served as chair of the Dearborn Traffic Commission. And the reason why I bring this up, while serving as chair myself and a chair, the person below me, assistant, we went to some other cities and looking at traffic calming measures back in 2016, I believe, was right around there. Livonia and Ann Arbor in particular, their traffic safety initiatives, we brought some ideas back to the city, and I'm sorry to say, at this particular time, it wasn't looked into. So we're talking about eight, nine years ago. We had a problem then, increasing problem to where we're at right now. Another problem is the education and enforcement engineering. That's fine, have that, but I want the enforcement. And as a prior law enforcement who's been in that patrol car, seeing what's going on, I want that enforcement. But what about the noise enforcement, too? We've got a couple state representatives that I talked to this issue about.
Thank you. Mr. Al Anzit.
Hello. I like this question because it's one of the main pillars I'm running on. And in fact, every resident, or most of the residents I spoke to, the first thing I asked them is, what do you want to see changed in the city? And the first thing they talk about is the reckless drivers. I do feel like the city's done a lot, and I do appreciate it, from the speed bumps to the speed radars, to the lighting of stop signs. I do feel like we need to do more, though. We need to connect with our residents. A lot of residents that live next to schools are telling me they wish there was a four-way stop in really critical areas, and I agree. And it's right next to major roads, like Telegraph. So I feel like we need to connect with the residents and prioritize the schools, the churches, the mosques. I also think it's about education. We have to talk to the kids, we have to talk to their parents, and we have to also educate them. So if it's a repeated offender, try educating them afterwards. After repeated times of trying to educate them, then you drop the hammer. And you either try to give them a ticket, and they keep repeating the same issue, then totally, yeah. Thank you.
Mr. Mawari.
Yeah, so it's clear, Dearborn, we have a reckless driving epidemic. And I'm going to call it an epidemic because that's what it is. I'd like to give props to the city's administration in taking action and addressing this epidemic. Well, I believe more work needs to be done. What I offer is a three-pronged approach. Prevention, I have a public health background, and in public health, we're all about prevention. And the way I would do this is conduct traffic studies to further guide data-driven solutions in terms of traffic calming measures and smarter street redesigns. Enforcement, I want to take proactive hiring measures to hire more police officers in the streets, because, I mean, per the last census, we know that Dearborn's population is growing, so we need more emergency personnel, whether it's police, whether it's fire, fires. And the last approach would be prosecution. People need to be held accountable, fully accountable to their actions. And I want to get rid of the weekend traffic classes and replace them with community service, because I promise you, we all know how they drive.
Mr. Al Sowaki.
I'm often asked, what is your top priority? And reckless driving was my number one priority when I ran in 2021. It is still my number one priority. It's a lingering issue. I supported the three-pronged approach to tackle the reckless driving issue, and that's through engineering, enforcement, and education. But I feel like we still can do more with education, specifically with the families at home. A lot of these families, these parents that are buying their kids these chargers and BMWs, and that's not really helping the police at all. My first car was a Regal that I got for $950. And then it didn't go fast at all, no matter how fast I wanted it to go. So that would be the approach I'd take. Continue with the education, continue supporting our police officers to run the right tools, including disciple readers, so that you can measure how loud some of these vehicles are. Because on Front Road, it sounds like a speedway, specifically for the seniors that live right off there. Thank you.
Mr. Almud.
So you know, when I'm out knocking doors, this is one of the top questions I get, especially about the noise. I just want to address that really quick. It does come to state law. We've already implemented the strictest possible repercussions for people who have log vehicles that we are allowed to implement during this current city council. So there are things that I want to address that are what the city council of Dearborn can do, because a lot of things I've heard so far are things that the state needs to do, or the things that the mayoral administration needs to do, which includes enforcement. The city council fully funds the police department currently, and I'm proud to be endorsed by the Dearborn Police because I supported that. But let's be clear, like some of the other people here said, a big part of it is prevention, and it comes down to engineering. I'm currently sitting on the master plan steering committee, and we are currently working on what are those long-term things that we need to do in order to fix the city. You know, since the 1980s, we've built a city that encourages faster and faster driving. Unfortunately, we're going to have to make some tough choices on how do we narrow those roads, how do we add bike lanes, how do we make it so that drivers are less likely to go fast on their own?
Thank you. It is now time for the candidates to make two-minute closing remarks. We will begin with Mr. Oswaki.
As a councilman for the city of Dearborn and an army captain, I've built my career on service and accountability. When residents call about speeding cars, log vehicles, or neglected properties, I act. We've added speed homes, illuminated stop signs, strengthened our police and fire response, and enforced property standards to keep our neighborhoods clean and safe. Dearborn deserves leaders who don't just talk about issues, they solve them. I'm proud of the results we've achieved, but there's more work ahead to keep our city safe, strong, and moving forward. My name is Kamal Oswaki. I'm running for city council, and hopefully I can count on your support and hope.
Mr. Almud.
So I'm going to take my two minutes to continue talking about reckless driving. So, you know, in just the past few years, we've shut down driving schools. We've increased tenfold the number of citations we've given out, and yet we're still not seeing progress on reducing the traffic like violations, right? We're still, we're hanging out with citations. We see the traffic fatalities coming down, we see the total incidents coming down, but we have one hundred and eighty-eight sworn officers. We have over two thousand intersections in the city, and we have over three hundred miles of road. You can't reasonably expect an officer on every single corner in the entire city, nor can you actually expect a speed bump for every one of the sixteen thousand homes that we have in the city. So realistically, you have to build a city that is going to provide psychologically a more tough time for people to speed. So that goes back to, well, how do we do that, right? You pedestrianize things. One of the things I fought for on my time at council was we need to start shutting down roads on the weekend. We already did it in the west downtown. We're working on it on Warren, and we're working on it in east downtown. And we also invested millions into the Dixverner Corridor in the south end to make more public spaces and make more areas where people can actually sit down and meet and gather in those public locations instead of places where cars dominate the whole place. So the interesting thing is pedestrianization and actually calming down those cars ends up building a better community and a better city that is also, by the way, more physically responsible and resilient, because higher density of buildings actually generates more property value per acre, which allows us to actually collect it on property taxes, which means that your tax dollars, individuals who live in single-family homes, are not subsidizing the business districts. So, you know, the last thing I want to say is I'm so proud of the current body we have for tackling a twenty-eight million dollar deficit. Within, by the second year, we were finally at a balanced budget. And let me tell you, that was one of the toughest things I think I've ever had to do in my life. And, you know, I'm just so genuinely proud of the work that we got done in the last four years, and I hope you guys can give me another four years.
I am running because I think we need to represent every person in this city, and there are fifty point four percent of the population of Dearborn are females. So right now, I feel like I'm the rose between the thorns, but that can change. That can change very quickly depending on how they behave. I just want to say that as a nurse, I have learned very well to work under pressure and in different situations and to always be respectful of every single person that I come in contact with. I think that is imperative. I believe in honesty and transparency in government, and I've always exhibited that in my personal life as well. I accept everyone and treat everyone equally, and I believe there's room in the sky for all birds to fly. I am asking for your vote. I think my experience with public funding, my experience with serving on the board, and my experience with working all over this community and all areas of Dearborn with all levels of education and all ages of people, I think I deserve a vote. And I would like, I'd like to prove it to you and continue serving the people as I have been serving since I've been twenty-three years old. I'd like to keep doing it. I love it, and I'm Dearborn proud no matter what.
Bravo. Mr. Andrew.
I asked somebody what I should talk about. They said, why don't you tell them about what public service means to you? And so here goes. A couple months ago, we had a fire. It was a car on the freeway. And as we were extinguishing the fire, we couldn't find the occupant, so we got close in and knocked the fire down to look inside the car, and the gas tank fell off a bit, and it exploded. And I was trapped inside the flames, so I immediately pushed my partner out of the way and then jogged out of the flames to find out that my gear was still on fire. So my partner then puts me out, and we went ahead and attacked the fire, put the fire out, made sure the occupant was safe on the side of the road, and then we took the fire truck out of service so they could take me to the emergency room. And then a house fire came out, and this one had a trapped victim. I called the dispatcher, told them to put us back in service, and we were going to the fire. We got to the fire at the same time as the lead engine. We were able to knock the fire down at the front door so they could start searching for the victim. They found him. I was able to get up on the front porch. I got a hand on his leg. We carried him to a stretcher, and then me and the crews went ahead and put the rest of the fire out. And then at that time, I had the ambulance take me to the ER, where the doctor had said, wait a minute, you mean you were burned two hours ago? And I said, yes. He goes, well, gosh. I know there was another fire, but why would you wait two hours to have six or seven second-degree burns treated? And I said, because I took a oath. And it's service before self, and I hope I can keep that service going. Thank you.
Mr. Sereni.
All right, thank you. As I said before, serving as your council president has been an honor. The biggest job I have is bringing people together. I believe I've done that. Our meetings are more efficient. We've achieved more things in these last four years than I have seen in many, many years in the past. We have the lowest tax rate that we've had since 2010, in fifteen years. I was the only council member on the last board that voted against the village to be renewed. It was voted down by the residents. I'm very proud of the work we have done. We have a fully staffed police department for the first time in years. We have the highest number of firefighters that we've ever had in the city of Dearborn. There's much more that we need to do. I can tell you that with the support of my colleagues, I brought forward the Clean Streets Program and funded the fire department. The sole job is to clean up the light throughout our city. We have a lot of work to do in that area. We have a lot of work still to do in our code enforcement. But with the support of the administration and us funding and working together and collaborating together, we've been able to do that. I'm proud of that work that we have done. It's leading, like we did with our ditchback dispatch center. We're not sitting back in Dearborn. There's a lot of conversations of other cities asking us to take over their departments and move our departments into bigger and larger departments. That's not by mistakes, folks. It's because it's an honor to work for the city of Dearborn, live in the city of Dearborn, and be part of it. But that's because we do what we're supposed to do. We make sure that we pay our bills. We make sure that our obligations are fulfilled. And to do that, to have a better Dearborn, I'm asking for one of your seven votes to continue on the Dearborn City Council. Thank you.
Mr. Abraham.
Thank you. My name is Robert Abraham. I've been serving on the city council for a long time, and I'm asking and pledging to do it for four more years. I'm asking you to consider me for one of your seven votes, honored before November fourth. I consider it an honor and a privilege to serve my hometown. I, like I said earlier, I was born here, I never left here, and I plan to stay here and continue to serve as long as you allow me. I think I have a unique perspective on the council. Kind of become the long-serving member, able to work with everybody else on the council to gain consensus and compromise and move things forward and make progress in our community in all facets. Developed a great relationship with our new mayor. I say new after four years, because I was here with Mayor Guido and Mayor O'Reilly as well. God rest their souls. If you're looking for someone to just go along, that's not always me. I have a unique focus. I have the same priorities we've all been talking about, and I try to never lose sight of them. Try and keep your eye on the ball when it comes to public safety. Our police and fire departments always have a perspective of putting our neighborhoods and families first. It's not always easy to balance what happens in our residential districts with what other special interest groups want to do. We already mentioned earlier, I believe, in keeping our streets safe and continuing strong enforcement and punishment for reckless and unsafe drivers, specifically in our neighborhoods around parks and around our schools. I also will make valued decisions when it comes to balancing our budgets. It's very difficult to balance everyone's priorities and come up with a balanced budget at the end of the year. So if you're looking for a candidate, you can do that. Thank you.
Mr. Harris, please.
Thank you. I'm going to go in a little bit different direction. I'm not reading from notes. I didn't have anything prepared. But what I want to say, public service is very important to me. I also live through my kids that are police officers in other communities. My son-in-law is a police officer in another community. My daughter's also a clinical psychologist that happens to be a detective. Public service is in my blood. I can harken back to August sixteenth, nineteen eighty-seven, spending three and a half days at Northwest Two Fifty Five Crash down at Metro Airport. I've seen a lot, and I've said there's other people here that have experienced a lot too. That's ingrained in my mind, public service and making people safe. I want to continue to serve. I'm probably the oldest, I am the oldest person on council, not longest-serving, but I am a senior, so a lot of senior issues are extremely important to me too. But what else is important is to listen to my constituents. I consistently get back to all my emails and my phone calls and the contacts that people see me out on the street or in the neighborhoods. I'm constantly getting people giving me a call. But I want to give a shout out to my wife, Jamie. Forty-five years that we've been married. You know what? It's been Jamie and I that have been hitting the streets, that have hit over seven thousand houses in a row, you know, in our city. It's us doing it. I'm not beholden to anybody. I don't look for endorsements usually. I don't give endorsements usually because I'm an independent person. I'm a check and balance to the administration. I'm a check and balance to what goes on in the city, and I do have a voice, and I use that voice, and I will continue to use that voice if I'm fortunate enough for you to reelect me to the Dearborn City Council. Thank you.
Mr. Ahmed.
So just to give you guys a little bit of background about me, I am a merchant marine for the last fourteen years, a small business owner, and a credit card prosecutor. I am a father of five, and I am not a television. I don't have higher aspirations. My only aspirations is to protect my family and serve my community, and that's what I intend to do. And I would really love for you guys to become my extended family, which you guys already are because you live in the same city. But the reason why I'm running is to serve my community. I can't tell you guys how much this city means to me. Being away from my family from seven to eight months out of the year, you just dream about home. I've been to some of the best places in the world and some of the worst. And you get that feeling like you can't wait to be home, you can't wait to be with your family and, you know, see familiar things. And once you get back here, you get to a point where your kids want to see you at home every day. So I've been giving up my career to serve my community. I'm going to be here. I'm going to be dedicated, and I will be present to hear all your concerns if you guys give me the honor to serve on council. Thank you.
Mr. Mwari.
Growing up, I used to always volunteer on election day, and something I noticed is a lot of people tend to vote on what they're told on to vote. As a kid, I'd give a flyer to the voters of the candidate that I'm endorsing. I'll tell them, hey, you should vote for my guy, and they'll go for it, but I think that's wrong. People should be elected based on values, based on merits, based on what they bring to the table, not because a little kid told you to vote. But that was a really empowering moment, honestly, and it just made me realize the nuances of politics. I mean, I'm still learning. I mean, I'm one of the youngest, if not the youngest candidates running for council. These past few months, we've been knocking on doors nonstop, hitting the doors, talking to people, actually talking to people, asking them how we can serve them. And when I go door to door, I hear the same concerns: property taxes, reckless driving, seniors need services that are more tailored to them. And business owners want to be able to attain the American dream, the American dream that my father came to this country for. And here's what I can promise if elected to council. I'm committed that residents are getting the best bang for your buck with all the property taxes that we're paying. While council does not have direct control over the rate of property taxes, what I can ensure, what council can ensure, is that city services are up to par, that if we're paying a large amount in property taxes, that we're getting the same amount of value into city services to address the reckless driving. And going back to my point earlier, which I didn't get to finish, when people get pulled over to either, A, pay a ticket, or get a weekend traffic class, and that's ineffective, in my humble opinion. We all know how to drive. I mean, most people really don't want to go to the class, but when you make them do community service, you're able to bring programs to the city without raising the cost of taxes to residents, and I actually provide more services to people without raising costs. So when you vote, I ask you to vote on conviction.
Mr. Alanci.
All right, that's a lot. I was waiting. All right, so thank you to access and eligible women voters for hosting this. So most residents I spoke to from east to west, they all believe in a cleaner, safe, and affordable Dearborn. And that's exactly what I'm planning on doing. Cleaner streets through efficient city services, a safer neighborhood through stronger police, and an affordable city through a strict budget and not raising your tax. I'm twenty-seven years old, right, and our mayor actually ran for state rep at twenty-seven. And I believe I'm at that ripe age where I could serve you guys the same way the mayor has. And the mayor is someone who I see as a role model. So yeah, with love for your support, and if you believe in a cleaner, safer, affordable city, with love for your support. I've invested thirty thousand dollars into this campaign. I'm not rich by any means. It's because I believe in the city. So I hope you guys believe in me, and the same way I ran my campaign, a lot of hard work. I was everywhere. I listened to everyone, and that's the same way I'm going to run in this position. I'm going to treat it like a full-time job, not a part-time job. So thank you. That's man Alanci.
Now you may give everyone a rousing round. I would like to say thank you to the candidates. Thank you for wanting to step up to serve your city and the people who reside in it. Thank you for wanting to step up to serve your city and the people who reside in it. And thank you for taking the time to be with us tonight. On behalf of the legal women voters of Dearborn, Dearborn Heights and the communities we serve, we want to thank the candidates for participating in tonight's forum. We appreciate the commitment it takes to run for office and we would like to thank you again for seeking to serve. To the voters, please remember to vote. The polls will be open on Tuesday, November 4th, from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Absentee ballots are now available from the city clerk's office for any reason. It is possible to visit the clerk's office during office hours to request an absentee ballot, vote it in the office, and turn it in all in one fell swoop. Please note that the city has issued corrective ballots for this election. Voters on the permanent absentee voter list will automatically receive the new ballot. Otherwise, see the clerk if you have been issued a ballot and need to replace it. Please vote and return the new ballot, even if you have already turned in the old ballot. Let me repeat that. If you have already turned in the old ballot, please see the city clerk to get the new ballot and vote again. For more information, you can visit vote411.org and my gov/vote. The forum has now ended and thank you so much for being here.